Eureka City, regular Eureka City Council meeting. If you would, please, let me read the land acknowledgement and then we will have the pledge. So, "The land that Eureka rests on is known in the Wiat language as Jerujiji. Passed actions by local, state, and federal governments remove the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Eureka acknowledged the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement demonstrates the city's commitment to dismantle the ongoing legacy of settler colonialism." And if we could get a roll call, please.
Councilmember Castellano, present. Councilmember Moulton, here. Councilmember Fernandez.
Here.
Councilmember Bauer.
Here.
Councilmember Contreras Deloche.
Here.
Mayor Burgel.
Here.
And if all of us who care to would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, for Mayor's announcements, we're going to start out with Kim Brown, who is going to give us some information on the upcoming Rotary Dendrum Parade.
Thank you for having me. I'm just here to let you know that the Old Town Rotary, or Road, Rotary, the Old Town Roadie Parade is April 29th, 2023. We have chosen this year's theme to be hometown superheroes. We just think between COVID, fires, earthquakes, storms, that everybody's kind of a superhero around here, and so we wanted to honor everybody, as well as Spider-Man, Superman, and all those other superheroes. Our grand marshals this year are going to be Jack and Michelle Ricky, who have done a lot in our, with our community. Let's see, the parade's going to start at 7th and E and end at Henderson and C. And our stage this year is going to be in Henderson Center. Henderson Center merchants have decided to join in, and they're going to do a street closure, where they're going to do a festival. I'll get all the details tomorrow, but they were talking about bounce house, ice cream truck.
Oh, bounce house.
The strip sidewalk sales, I don't know what all they're going to do. I don't think they, they'll let me know, but, and I also spoke with the Rotary Dendrum Society, and I'm, we're hoping to get them up there as well for the plant sale. Anyway, the parade is free this year, and you can go to, sorry, you can go to euricarodiparade.com to sign up, and it's going to be a lot of fun. So, it's a long, it's a long tradition. I believe we took it over in like nineteen, the 1990s, and just hope to have everybody celebrate and be there.
Hopefully, we'll get some good weather, huh?
Yes, yes. So, y'all need floats, and hope to see you there.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so, under Mayor's reports, I just wanted to make a couple of announcements. Let's see. One of those is that this last weekend, we had our first of many community health town hall meetings. That was Saturday. We had four speakers, Mark Lemers from Department of Health and Human Services, Leah Nagy from NAMI, Commander LaFrance from the Police Department Special Teams, and Luke Brownfield, who's a public defender. It was a great opportunity to get questions answered and to really learn about what services and what people actually do in the community, because oftentimes, I feel like, you know, we think maybe nothing's happening, but if you're, if you get involved, you will start to see that there's plenty happening with, you know, sometimes we don't talk about it much, but there's plenty happening, and there's ways to get involved in that as well. So, it was a really, really interesting, it's on the website, if you haven't seen it, it's a couple of hours, but the questions and the responses were really, really interesting and important, so I would encourage you to, if you get an opportunity, take a look at that. I want to thank Jacob Rosen, the managing mental health clinician for the city of Eureka, and Laura Montana, Montane, for being the team that got that whole thing, we, working together to make that happen. And as I said, we'll, probably our next one will be June 3rd coming up, and we'll be discussing a number of topics again. So, also, something that I've done, and I really encourage people to get involved with this, because this is a really critical topic, and it's really important, it's going to take all of us to make a difference, we all need to pick up an oar. Secondly, I got to speak at the Cal Poly Social Justice Summit last week, and that was really great. I got to speak with the avid class from Humboldt, I forget the name of the school now, Humboldt Community School. And then, again, we got to do Bull for Kids' Sake, and I'll tell you what, if you've never done Bull for Kids' Sake, that is such a fun event, it's such a great cause, and I would encourage, encourage everyone to do it next year. So, with that, that's all I have for now. We have no presentations, so it is time for a public comment. This is the time for members of the public who wish to be heard on matters that do not appear on the agenda. City Council policy is to limit each speaker to three minutes. Such time allotment or portion thereof shall be transferred to other, or shall not be transferred to other speakers. The public will be allowed to speak concurrently with the calling agenda item following the staff presentation of that item. In pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council may not take any action on the item that does not appear on the agenda. So, do we have anyone from, come on up, friend.
I just want to say that I thank you for being the mayor, because when I was a kid, Bonnie Gould was our mayor, and I used to sand furniture for her, and I want to thank Leslie, because Leslie got me in the parades before doing this kinetic sculpture race. And most of all, I want to thank the chief and the captain of the Eureka Police Department. They've been, they've been a big part of my life, and everybody here, and Bill downstairs the ape, and I'm sorry if I'm breaking down people, but I want to say, thank you, Eureka, the city mayors, everybody in Eureka for helping me out to be still alive and the person that I am, and thank everybody, my wife, Jennifer, and everybody here at the meeting, just everybody, thank you so much.
Thank you, we appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from inside chambers? Hi.
Hi, everyone. Tiffany LaFune from Humboldt Homeless Expertise and Leadership. To state the obvious, it's so wet and so cold outside, and it has been for a while, it's going to be for as far out as the weather forecast shows us, and it hasn't been very long since our special meeting last week about homelessness, but when you're outside, that feels like a really long time, a week, even a couple hours out in this is a really long time. And I think it's become clear to everyone now that Eureka lacks any low barrier shelter options. There are barriers that prevent most of the people who are living outdoors from accessing them. And while encampments may not provide adequate shelter, not having to pack up wet things first thing in the morning, and walk around all day and get wetter and colder throughout the day just to go in, back into your wet tent with your wet blankets and sleeping bags, that's huge. Not having to do that every day would make a huge difference. And the other thing, I cannot stress the importance of this enough, is keeping communities together. Communities are what most people out here rely on to stay alive and have their needs met. We all need community, but especially when your physiological needs are not being met. So, that's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Tiffany.
Can I start again? Please. I got a call today from a mother and her daughter and three children who are outside, and we took them supplies and tents and sleeping bags and as much as we could, but it's a thing that's happening constantly, and we have a lot of people that are out there for a long, long, long time, chronically homeless. Those are the folks that AHA has wanted to find a place for, because there's nothing between the street and low-income housing. It's just nothing available. Our shelters are not available for a lot of people. They're not low barrier, as Tiffany said. I'm here because last week, I want to speak to the council primarily. Last week, it was mentioned that AHA sort of left the city in a lurch after conversations about creating a tiny house village. I, I think the words also were used as a authorized encampment, and there were no discussions about an authorized encampment back then, it was strictly a tiny house village, and we had asked for people being able to, to stay on site, sleep there, and continue to construct a village. That wasn't something that was possible to do at the time. Maybe that's something that's possible to do now, but it wasn't at the time. We had, we did have conversations, they were kind of stilted and edgy, and it was halfway through the conversations when it was some, came to AHA's realization that, that we needed to submit a proposal. So, we did, but we didn't really, I, I feel like our conversations were just getting started, not like they were ending, and they did just kind of fritter away, and I know Leslie wanted to bring something to the council about tiny house village as a pilot project, but was really very tentative and concerned that, that too much information might make council less inclined to want to do that. And I think council needs to hear all the information and make decisions about what's really possible in order to be able to help people, because really, AHA isn't a program, the programs that we have actually are programs that are for the people, and that's how they evolve, so that they fit the people. A lot of people don't fit into programs. So, I would just really like the council and the city to consider that the conversation is open, we haven't closed any conversation, we need a lot of collaborators, anybody who's interested in these kinds of projects should be engaged. And I don't know if it'd be really useful to have a workshop to bring a lot of people together until we have got a chance to talk to the planners and the building department. They were never in the conversations before, and I kept asking for them, but we didn't have that, so let's start again and get some definitive stuff we can work with.
Thank you, Nizzie. So, is there anyone else? Come on up.
Hello, is this working? Oh, okay. I read in the outpost, lost outpost, and the elsewhere, I remember it being brought up at the last meeting about a three-phase plan by the county to hear public input on plans, on proposed locations, and then maybe implement a project, a pilot project, which I would like to see that happen, because I think that it would be a good idea to keep the dialogue going, keep the, the issue in the forefront. Since my last presentation about camp, homeless camp idea, I have refined it a little bit more as a homeless relief camp with a watershed restoration training, basically, agenda. And I have a lot of experience in this, so I can actually design that, but I don't really think that necessarily the county property, excuse me, this, the city property is necessarily the appropriate location for that. And so, I am reaching out and going to make a proposal to federal agencies. I worked for many federal agencies, I'm comfortable approaching them, with the idea of a, more or less, a homeless disaster relief camp, providing the services, ultimately providing septic containment, toilets, removable, you know, that can be removed, and variations on a theme. And that's the first step right there for cleaning up your watershed, is to not have this widespread indiscriminate fecal matter that is running down urban areas in stormwater flow, getting into streams and estuaries and such. So, by consolidating people in a disaster camp, which is really a humane historic model, that we could carry on with taking care of people and taking care of our own environmental concerns, which is water quality. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else from, come on up?
I also have packets. Thank you. My name is Ashley Bellis. I am the owner of Ashley Seafood and the fishing vessel, the Aguero. This subject is regarding public hoist two and lease, lease changes for commercial fishermen's hoist two at Fisherman's Terminal. A quick background, I started in the commercial fishing industry, January of 2019, and since then, my work has transitioned from breaking barriers for my own fish miss, fish business, to helping others establish a path with theirs. Over the last two years, I've been working on guidelines for our county's fishermen's dockside market, and that would allow fishermen to sell in a farmer's market-like setting on land for their catch, to process it, to store it, and develop a business beyond the ocean. This would give our Humboldt County fleet economic resilience, educate our community and local seafood industries, and bridge the gap between the fisherman and consumer. The most effective way to offload or remove the catch from the commercial boats in large quantities is to hoist it off. Hoisting of catch also helps less handling and more care of the fish. City of Eureka owns both public hoists one and two, however, public hoist two is in contract with new tenants, South Bend Products, and maintained, public, to be maintained as public access. When I have asked to use the hoist, I am told it's the city's hoist by the company. They will offload us with their private company hoist at 25 cents per pound for albacore and any other fishery, 40 cents per pound. For our small businesses, this is a huge expense. Per ton, that's 500 and 800. For my small business, these fees would have accumulated to 51,403 dollars. I have communicated with many members of city council, or city of the city since 2001, and I am bringing this before the council, because it is clear that the lease requirements of the hoist need to be changed. The current and previous leaseholders are and are, and were not using it as is intended, and to provide proper access, change has to be made. My vision for the dockside fishermen's market is to ultimately give the community access to local seafood, and for our community, for our commercial fishermen to start and grow their business with direct marketing. This new development in our community will forever change our commercial fishing industry. Our local region has delivered a total of 256, 256,282,038 pounds of seafood between 2009 and 2019. Our, our community plays a vital role in our sustainable global food supply, and it remains to be unknown the mass impacts our new blue economy developments will implode in our industry. By developing a dockside market, we would be creating a foundation on land for us to better serve the community with seafood. Better strategies like this have reduced financial impact, not only within our fleet.
Thanks, Ashley, your time's up.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here.
Good evening, Mayor, and city council members and city staff. My name is Joey Shields, I'm a project manager with Link Housing. Really excited to be back in Eureka for a follow-up community meeting. Last, last time I was here, the, the city of Eureka and Link Housing, as well as the help of the mayor and city council members, were able to get the word out to the point where we had over 70 participants participate in a community outreach event that we held. We also followed that up with a community survey, where folks that live and work in Eureka were able to weigh in on various public transportation and infrastructure improvements that they wanted to see. Really happy to share that we had over 270 responses to that survey, which is pretty mind-blowing these days, given how busy everyone is. But I'm really happy to be back again, because we're going to hold a follow-up community meeting tomorrow evening at Jefferson Community Center. We will be really kind of unveiling the results of that community survey, as well as sharing a much more refined ASIC application scope. Again, like I said, at our previous, for my previous presentation, the city of Eureka and Link Housing are partnering on the Affordable Housing and Sustainable Communities Program application, which will total over $30 million of investment, combined affordable housing as well as public transportation and infrastructure improvements. Again, I would just ask, friend, in a friendly way, if the city and the mayor would be willing to help kind of broadcast this event, help really get the word out, because again, I, we have kind of a tough hill to climb to get to 70 people, and if we can exceed that, that would be fantastic, but just can't express my appreciation enough to the city for your continued partnership on this application. It's going to be truly transformative if we can get this funding for the city, and again, just really grateful for you all and your continued partnership. I do have some flyers, and I also, for folks in the audience, I do have some flyers with me as well, if that's okay. We do have both food, childcare, and Spanish interpretation that will be offered at the event, and it will be hosted both in-person as well as Zoom, so it should be as accessible as possible. And again, thank you all for your time, and I hope you all have a good evening. Appreciate you being here.
Could you give us the time? You said Jefferson Community Center, but what's the time?
Thank you so much, Mayor. Yes, so doors will open at 5:30, the presentation itself will start at 6:00 PM.
6:00 PM, thank you.
Thank you all, really appreciate it. Have a good night.
Okay, friends, does anybody else in the audience want to comment? If not, we'll take it over to Zoom, and I see Althea.
Yep, so, Saturday morning, on my way to work, around 8:30, we came up on the, kind of the very tail end of the pedestrian who was killed in the intersection right there outside City Hall. And as soon as I saw the flashing lights on Fifth Street, I knew what had happened, I could guess what had happened, because I know that that intersection is not signalized. I have actually mapped out all the traffic signals along Fourth and Fifth Street, and their corresponding or not corresponding bus stops, although transit wasn't running, you know, that early on a Saturday. You know, I did offer to the city council that we could do a transit field trip, a tri-transit, and I had actually been planning to specifically point out that intersection to you guys, because it's not signalized, although there are trip generators there, you know, of City Hall and of the job market, and, and all that stuff, so that you could see how dangerous it is. And I, you know, my offer for a field trip still stands, it could be a mobile city council meeting, I don't know. But I, you know, I hope you guys will take me up on that, and also use any influence you have with Caltrans to get more signals on Fourth and Fifth Street, because, you know, they don't have these public meetings where I can zoom in and tell them this, the way that the city council does, so they're not really listening to the voices of the public about this. So, like I said, you know, offer still stands to, to tri-transit, and, you know, let's, let's get more signals on Fourth and Fifth Street, you know, so it's safer for people to cross the street. Thank you.
Thank you, Althea. Do you see anyone else?
Is there anyone else on Zoom that would like to comment?
Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment. And before we move to consent calendar, I forgot something in my mayor reports, I just want to say congratulations to all the people that applied and are now on our boards and commissions. We appreciate you being of service. We'll be having a workshop to kind of, yeah, commissions workshop, so we can all learn what that looks like coming up very soon, well, kind of soon, but we just want you to know that we really appreciate your willingness and your dedication to our city, so thank you for that. So, now we'll move on to consent calendar. All matters listed under this category are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. Pursuant to city council resolution 2011-22, if a member of the public would like an item on the consent calendar pulled and discussed separately, the request shall be made to a council member prior to the meeting. Unless a specific request is made by a council member, the consent calendar will not be read, there will be no separate discussion of these items. And so, I have a note that F2.
Hi, I haven't had a chance to talk.
I'm sorry, I, I don't think we saw you, but you know. Um, can we, so why don't you go ahead, and we'll start your three minutes, I apologize, I guess we didn't see you. Are you there?
The phone caller with the last digits of 7610, if you would like to make public comment on items not on the agenda, please go ahead. You are muted, in case you are talking, please unmute.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
Okay, thank you for this opportunity to speak, and I, I foremost want to say that I deeply appreciate the Eureka City Council, and I know that historically, they have been the brave ones, taking measures that others have not, and I'm very proud of them for that. And, but I think that this whole situation with the death of Justine Green, and then the other, the man who was at the, at the bus stop, it does challenge us to look more deeply into what we need to do to fill the gap. And I think it's very challenging to figure out, what are those gaps? Because, you know, I appreciate Miles' statement that they're all low barrier, but they're really not, but I think he's speaking to our intention. And I try to be very conscientious, so before I, I made this call, I did call over to the Eureka Rescue Mission, and I had talked at length with Brian Hall last week or a couple weeks ago, and then I got to talk with, with the women's side, and she said very emphatically, no, they're not low barrier, and if they suspect that someone is not sober or on drugs, they will be tested and they will not be welcomed there, as hard as that decision is. And at the current moment, they're not yet spaces for families with women and children, and they actually have to turn them away, and, you know, put them on a waiting list. And there are other gaps, like, you know, they don't have space for, for women and their teenage sons, and, you know, and now what they do is they, you know, if you come now, they are on the overflow, so I just thought I would put in a pitch that the way to get into it is go 6:30, go to the men's side, and their dinner, you'll go over to the overflow. But the, the point I'm trying to make is that, and, and that there has been some information provided by the toxicology report of Justine Green, that indeed, she was on drugs, and at a level that, you know, I'm researching it, so I don't have the final answer, but that she very much could have been in an agitated state and not fully, you know, not, not having good judgment, but who knows? Those things are so gray area. But the point I'm trying to make is, let's really look at the problem, which is, it's wonderful these programs provide some amount of flexibility, but they should not be asked to provide the kind of flexibility we need, because so many people out there really are, you know, are on drugs, or, you know, are using drugs, whether it's self-medication or for other reasons. We have people with mental disabilities that make it hard for them to stay in these programs. So, I think that we need to start with what that would look like, and start with the people, and find out what would it look like, and maybe there isn't a model around the country, and maybe we just need to start it here. and find out what would it look like. And maybe there isn't a model around the country and maybe we just need to start it here. But I'm sure there are. I just haven't, you know, I just think we've started that. So I would ask that in your agenda item, please, I beg you to include something about getting the best information we can. Cause it does change. I mean, I've been calling for a couple of weeks and every time I called, it's a little bit of difference. That's kind of the nature of it, but let's get the best information we can about what really is out there. What does low barrier look at, look like? Because my question is, of course, it's great to have low barrier, but at what point is it that they can't be inflexible? And they shouldn't be expected to be flexible.
Thank you, Sandra. Your time is up. Thank you so much for speaking.
Was weird. That was interesting. So just a point of clarification, City Manager Slattery, with the extreme weather shelter, could you talk just for a minute about that? As far as they're, my understanding is they're not breathalyzing during extreme weather. As long as people are behaving and not fighting.
Yeah, and I apologize for the misinformation that I provided last time. There was a point at which the rescue mission during the COVID time was not breathalyzing and they recently brought that up. I wouldn't say recent, maybe a month ago, they brought that back. But as far as Saint Vinnie's is concerned, when there is overflow and there is space capacity issues, my understanding, and I can double check with Bob, is that they're not doing a breathalyzer for folks during, and it's not necessarily the extreme shelter. It's an overflow when there's not other space there. The agreement that we have does not provide for that. It has other requirements of being over eighteen and some other restrictions, but it doesn't list any of those other barriers in there.
I would like to have that clarification because I myself have talked to Brian and he's assured me that that during extreme weather, that they are not breathalyzing as long as people are behaving and not fighting.
Yes, during extreme weather with the rescue mission, I, I thought you were talking about the overflow shelter at Saint Vinnie's. Okay.
All right, thank you. Okay, so we're going to go back to item F two, pavement rehabilitation. And let me just take a peek here. Traffic Project Manager Scott Elsmore.
If we could. Are we going to do the rest of the consent calendar first?
Oh, yes, we are.
And it'll be, I believe it's going to be Public Works Director Gerbing.
Great, okay, thank you. So are there any other items that need to be pulled from the consent calendar? Okay, so can we get a motion then?
Motion to approve the consent calendar. Minus F two.
Thank you.
A second.
Thank you. Please vote.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Thanks, everybody. And so now we'll have a report on pavement rehabilitation. Thank you, Director Gerbing.
There, yeah. Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The item that's before you this evening is the Pavement Rehabilitation twenty twenty-three project. It's our annual paving project, but it's not the only annual paving project this year. It's the first of a couple. And I'll tell you a little bit more about that. This project is looking to repave Fairway Drive between Ridgecrest and the city limits, extending a bit beyond that with a partnership with the county. They're kicking in seventy-five thousand dollars to pave from the city limits basically to the top of the hill where Fairway turns into Herrick. And with that Fairway Drive project, we'll be widening the pavement section a few feet in certain sections, clearing and grubbing additional space beyond that for additional shoulder and putting in better bike lanes than are there presently, going with a six foot wide bike lane along that roughly one mile stretch of Fairway Drive. The rest of this part of the paving project is in the Old Town area. And it includes second and third streets and a lot of streets from E to H, along with water valves underneath those streets to basically improve our ability to shut down water mains and keep things serviceable for customers. All told, between those two parts of the project, you're looking at about two million dollars for paving and three hundred sixteen thousand dollars for water for a total ask of two point three eight six million with contingency. And then the rest of the paving that is included in Measure H funding for this year will be bid with the upcoming H and I Sixth and Seventh Street project. A lot of pedestrian and bike safety improvements with that. And more water valves because of underlying issues. And then paving H Street, kind of at the southern reach of the city and all of I Street from Harris to Sixth. So still a lot more paving to come. A lot of improvements with this project that's before you this evening and additional improvements for pedestrian bike safety that are included in the upcoming project. And then also in conjunction with this work in Old Town before too long, like as soon as the weather is clear enough, basically, we'll be starting to install the bollards in Old Town that will allow us to facilitate those street closures for special events in a much more timely and efficient fashion. So that's what's before you tonight, though, is the paving for Fairway and Old Town with a total ask of just under two point four million. And I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
So some of this will be redundant because I already kind of discussed this. But just to be able to ask publicly and kind of discuss it, my question had been about that paving project that's going out there on Fairway that goes past Lumbar Hills where the roads are, you know, in some areas very narrow. And the question that I, what I was trying to find out was if there were going to be any pedestrian accommodations consistent with our complete streets concept that we're trying to do where we're trying to accommodate not, not just cars, but also bicycles as well as pedestrians. And that had been my question was, is there any planning for pedestrians as well?
Yeah. Thank you for that question. And like, like, like you mentioned, we discussed earlier. We do have the right of way there on paper to accommodate more facilities for pedestrians on Fairway Drive. Unfortunately, the grades are not such that that's very feasible. And so with this paving project, we are asking council to, to award enough funding to widen the roadway section to provide better bike lanes. But in order to provide sidewalks, there would be additional grading and retaining wall work that needed to happen. And the, the estimate that our staff developed to extend sidewalks from the existing end of the sidewalk, sort of at the bottom of the hill as you approach the upper crossing of Martin's Louvre. From there to Lundblade, which is the entrance to Lumbar Hills, would be about five hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. If you were to extend those sidewalks all the way to the end of the project at the city limits, that number would go up to about one point two million. And you compare that to the cost of paving that one mile of Fairway Drive, which is about six hundred thousand, you're looking at potentially tripling the cost of the project in order to provide the sidewalks. So for that reason, staff determined that at this time, it just wasn't feasible to provide those facilities. It's always something that could be looked at in the future with some likely ATP grants and connectivity with future trail projects.
Couple of follow up questions. One is that this is a relatively new subject for me and so I just, does it quite a bit increase the cost down the line if we decide to pursue it down the line versus pursuing it now?
With this type of work, probably not. Only because the you, you are going to incur additional mobilization and demobilization costs just to get the contractor there. But the nature of the work is different. You're not going to use the same equipment to build retaining walls or other retaining structures and grade and, and place sidewalk. You're not going to use the same equipment as you do when you're just paving and clearing and grubbing. So it could be a separate standalone project in the future. The only thing that you might lose out on is the mobilization, demobilization costs, which given the scope of either of these projects, the current one or a future sidewalk project are relatively nominal.
Well, I, I just want to, oh, sorry.
I was just going to say, Councilmember Fernandez?
I, I just kind of want to follow on that question and ask, then if we're going to push it into the future, potentially looking at grants, how far along those lines are we looking? How far into the future are we potentially looking? Because right now, we're also looking at some unprecedented inflation.
Yeah, we're, we don't currently have a project like this in the works. You know, like I mentioned to Councilmember Contreras Deloche, the staff analysis right now said that basically the sidewalks aren't feasible. Like the city manager mentioned at a relatively recent meeting, the, the vision is to have a loop trail around the southern and eastern limits of the city, connecting with the waterfront trail and the Beta Zoo Trail, which is yet to be constructed. That's the point at which I could see, you know, the potential of looking for grant funding to connect sidewalks, to get neighborhoods connected with trail projects. But that loop trail is a concept at this point and not even in the planning phases. So it's not within our, our planning horizon. It's just, we're, we're not quite to that point yet.
Councilmember Castellano?
The, the state of the road right now, how severe is it on a scale of one to ten, I guess? What, you know, I mean, I think you can imagine, I'm just kind of debating, like, would it make sense to wait on paving it so that we could kind of save for these other improvements? Or is it of a state that it needs to be paved sooner than later?
It's really of a state where it needs to be paved sooner rather than later. If you drive Fairway Drive, pavement is graded on a scale of zero to a hundred, the pavement condition index. And without looking at the numbers driving through there, my guess is that Fairway is somewhere in the forties through the, the worst sections, which is failing. And if it's allowed to continue in its current condition, it's only going to fail worse. And it's going to get to the point where we can't just do a, a grind and overlay, which is what's proposed this year. But it would get to the point where the subgrade starts to fail and then we would have to do a complete full depth rehabilitation of that street, similar to what was done in, on Second Street last year.
Gotcha. And then I have another question, but it's unrelated, but I think Councilmember Contreras Deloche has a related question.
You may.
This may not be a question for you. I'm not sure, but it, what is the process? I'm just thinking going forward, we're going to continue, I think, to encounter a either or possibilities because of cost. So what is the process for picking and choosing which we're going to do for complete streets rather than just doing the full complete street where we're doing bike and pedestrian? What's the process for not doing that instead of, you know, just going, we're going to, you know, nix this thing?
Yeah. Well, thankfully, most of our street network has good pedestrian facilities already. And the struggle that we're going to encounter, which is something that we've highlighted before, is how are we going to provide bike facilities on streets that have parking on both sides and have two lanes of travel? You know, one in each direction within a sixty foot right of way, which is the typical right of way within the city. You only have so much real estate to work with. So the struggle that we're going to have in trying to be consistent with the complete streets policy is how to provide those bike facilities. Fairway and almost a mile of missing sidewalk within the city limits, that's an unusual situation. So this is sort of a one off. And, you know, I can't think of another example where, at least in the near future, we're going to encounter this particular situation again.
Meaning with pedestrians.
With pedestrians.
But we're encountering it with bicycles.
We will be, yes. But there, you know, we're also embarking on the bike plan, which is in the works now. It's a grant funded project and looking at really delving into these issues of how can we provide bike facilities? What are the options for providing better bike connectivity? And what trade offs would we encounter, whether it's removing parking, reducing travel lanes, all of those things will be part of the bike plan analysis.
Thank you. So I was wondering, is, is there a clear process or is there a clear like, like, okay, so we can't satisfy this in this area for this particular reason? Or is it just going to be kind, or is it just, I guess I'm wondering what the process itself is. Is it just kind of like staff discretion and how do we know so that when we're moving forward with those projects, like, how does that work?
I, I think it would be very similar to as City Engineer Willer was talking about. We have to prioritize things. When we passed Measure H, a huge emphasis from the community was fixing our roads. While we fix those roads, we can try and realize the benefits of, of, of complete streets where we can. But if we continue down the path of not maintaining our roads to where they're at right now, as Director Gerbing stated, the worse it gets, the more costly it is to replace it. And so like Director Gerbing said, this is really an anomaly. We, vast majority of our streets do have sidewalk facilities in there. The only restrictions for complete streets will be with the road and whether or not we'd have to do share rows or something like that. But when the bike plan comes up, you know, there's a way that we can create connectivity, maybe not to somebody's front door, but at least in a close proximity where it can get into that location. And that will give us a better idea on where we put those bypasses and where we put those things so that people can get access to the rest of the city. They may have to go a block or so away because their street's too narrow. But finding the closest proximity to have connectivity for all of our neighborhoods would be the idea.
I am so sorry. I'm got a million. So can we, and this was something else we talked, but again, in the interest of speaking about it. And one of the areas that can't be widened and cannot accommodate the bike lanes is going to be that bridge. And so are we able to do, I, I think you guys had talked about the possibility of share rows or something like that, that delineate that, hey, this bridge is going to be shared with, potentially with cyclists.
Actually, in looking closer at the bridge after we spoke, right now, the, the width of the bridge is sufficient for the two travel lanes and six foot bike lanes. What it doesn't have beyond that is the unimproved shoulder, which makes the road feel wider and allows for vehicles to then use that shoulder, you know, if they're disabled or what have you. So it does feel narrower, but the actual width of the bridge is sufficient to allow bikes to have a six foot bike lane next to the traveling.
Councilmember Castellano?
Just a small question about the improvements in Old Town. I know there's sidewalk improvements that are happening as well. Has there been any look at additional lighting, pedestrian scale lighting in Old Town along with those improvements?
Not with this project, but that's certainly something we'll be looking at in the future with other projects, but not as part of this paving project.
Okay. Any further questions? Okay, we'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone in chambers that would like to comment on this item? Seeing no one, we'll bring it to Zoom. Let me see a couple hands.
Colin Fisk.
Good evening, Council. Colin Fisk, the Executive Director of CRTP, the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities. I first wanted to just thank city staff for including improved bike lanes as well as sidewalk improvements in, in Old Town in, in this project. I think, you know, Althea reminded us earlier of the importance of safety improvements for folks who are walking and biking and rolling. That's an urgent thing and don't want to do anything to get in the way of those improvements. I am a little bit concerned, though, that we are not following the procedures in the newly adopted complete streets policy, which are there to ensure that we get as many feasible improvements as possible whenever we do a project. So my reading of that policy is that when there's a project like this, you would look at all modes of transportation and you would include all feasible improvements for each mode in the project. And if something, if the city believes that something is not feasible or there's another reason not to include improvements, that there's a process written into the policy for, for granting exceptions, which includes, you know, a, a written justification and an opportunity for public comment. So as you've been discussing, there may be, you know, reasonable explanations for why, say pedestrian improvements can't be included on Fairway or, you know, bikeway improvements may not be included in Old Town. But I would really like to see the city closely following its complete streets policy to provide those justifications and an opportunity for the public to engage with any possible exceptions, just to make sure that we're, we're taking every opportunity to provide that critical safety infrastructure at the lowest cost possible whenever a project comes up. So I would encourage you to kind of go back to that policy and make sure that we're following it as closely as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Colin.
Althea?
Um, so I'm wondering if, if it's really completely not feasible to have a dedicated pedestrian facility, uh, you know, a, a sidewalk there. Um, is there any plan to use physical barriers to protect the bike lane? Whether that's, you know, your flex posts or guard rail or anything? Um, I understand that the doctrine is that cars should be able to pull into the bike lane or onto the sidewalk to get out of traffic, which is pretty um, insulting as someone who, you know, would potentially be hit by them doing that. But um, I'm just wondering if, you know, I mean, if, if, if there's going to be guard rail between the traffic lane and the bike lane, that makes it safer for bikes. It also makes it, you know, feasible for pedestrians um, who maybe don't feel safe walking on the unimproved shoulder, you know, they don't want to fall over the edge or something like that. Um, you know, having that barrier would make it feasible to walk in the bike lane without feeling like you're, you know, overtly likely to be, to be hit by a car.
Thanks, Althea.
I see no one else.
Seeing no one? Okay, seeing no one else on Zoom or in the audience, we will bring it back. Close public comment and bring it back to council for comments and a motion hopefully.
To comment?
Uh, Councilmember Fernandez?
Would it be possible to postpone this while we get the numbers on the drivability or the usability of the road? And well, I mean, we would likely have to put it out to bid again if we wanted to take into consideration the cost for uh, those improvements, correct?
It, the way it is now, it would definitely increase costs because none of those, um, well, there may be some bulb bouts that were in Old Town, which are a little bit different than your regular sidewalk. I don't think, Director Gerbing, could you change order? 1.5 million dollars on a $2 million contract?
Yeah, I, I don't think that we have the necessary line items in this bid to be able to uh, do a change order for that type of work. And the fact of the matter is, it's just not in the budget. So when you look at the cost of providing that sidewalk, as I mentioned, uh, on Fairway Drive, to stay within the limits of what's budgeted for this project, basically, we would have to take Old Town paving off the table. That, the money that's allocated to that within the bid would cover the cost of the sidewalks on Fairway. But based on the condition of Fairway and its need for paving, Old Town and its need for paving, staff's belief is that this is the best use of the city's available funds.
Councilmember Castellano?
Small question. Would it be possible? I'm sure there's a term for these, those little round bumps that kind of help cars delineate when they're going over a line. Would it be possible to put those along Fairfield to help distinguish between the bike lane and the, and the vehicle lanes?
I think I heard a murmur over here. Those are called botz dots. And uh, they're, they're not like, uh, they're not preferred any longer. There is the potential, potential, depending upon how the costs come in with the project of adding in some sort of feature to better delineate the bike lane and uh, provide a better sense of protection to cyclists, sense of protection, not a physical barrier. And to uh, help to slow vehicular traffic, motorized vehicular traffic along the route. Uh, it's not currently part of the project, uh, but we are looking at the possibility of adding it in, again, looking at how the project uh, goes. And if we don't encounter other unforeseen costs, then the, the uh, contingency that staff is requesting would accommodate something like that. Exactly what it looks like, we're not sure.
Okay. With that, I would like to make a motion um, to declare Mercer Fraser Company the low bidder for the pavement rehabilitation 2023 project and award bid number 2023-05 to Mercer Fraser Company for the amount of $1,938, sorry, $1,938,000. $938,000, sorry, you get it. And approved $2,750,000 for pavement rehabilitation items and approved $316,000 for construction of water system utility items and construction management services for a total construction cost of $2,386,000, which includes a contingency of approximately $15,000. Um, with the addition of adding in um, those protections as discussed um, by staff um, along Fairway.
Second.
Great, we have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Councilmember Fernandez. Dissented. Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to legislative action correspondence. Does anybody have any? Councilmember Bauer?
Yeah, I, I do have one. I want to, um, this relates to the town hall, the mental health, um, town hall that we just had. Senate Bill 43, um, which was um, introduced by Senator Eggman, December 5th, 2022. It was recently amended. This, this legislation would essentially, um, the current legislation is part of the Lanterman-Petrus Short Act. Uh, allows us to conserve people that are gravely disabled. Um, this law would basically expand the definition of gravely disabled to also include a condition that will result in substantial risk of serious harm to the physical or mental health of a person due to a mental health disorder or a substance use disorder. So I, this was discussed as a, as another tool um, to help us with people that are, you know, having um, you know, mental health issues and I, if you read the bill, if you want to take the time to read it, maybe we bring it back and it, there's plenty of time to, to discuss this further. But I think it's a really good, um, really good bill that could help, you know, help the issues that we're facing as a city and as a nation, really, you know, um, because the current um, gravely disabled uh, definition, it really restricts how, how, you know, it's really a, a high bar, is what I'm trying to say, you know, so. Something I, I talk about or, or see as something that we want to support, but I think it's something that's worth our, our time and consideration.
So. Do we want to bring it back?
You could do a little, we can bring it back if it's up to council, if they'd like to bring it back. And what we'd probably do is bring back a discussion by the city attorney and a potential letter of support, if that's what council wants us to do.
I'd like to see it brought back. Thank you for bringing that forward.
Thank you.
It's important. Um, okay. So moving on to ordinances and resolutions. So H1 Nationwide Opioid Settlement with Teva, Allergan, a bunch of different country, companies. Several different companies. And that would be our city attorney? If you'd like to read all those, you're welcome to.
Uh, we act, we actually have our deputy city attorney on uh, on Zoom, so I will, I will pass it on to Robert Black tonight.
Welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Luna, and thank you, Mayor. Yeah, with, in this context, the more the merrier. And the uh, settlements that are currently before you are added on to some pre-existing settlements that occurred with certain distributors, uh, and the Johnson and Johnson parent company, Janson. Um, these five are uh, Teva, Allergan, CVS, Walgreens, and Walmart. They will uh, add significantly to the uh, resources available uh, for the city to address problems created by and solutions to the opioid crisis. Uh, and there is a very wide, uh, that, the, the funds do have some restrictions on how they can be used, but it's a very wide berth. And I do believe um, the city will have absolutely no problem finding uh, very uh, useful expenditures within the allowable budgeting uh, that comes with these settlements. In exchange for the settlement, of course, the city is giving up any further right to pursue these five particular defendants. But uh, in exchange for that, they're putting about $20 billion nationwide, of which about $2 billion will flow into the state of California uh, over a period of years. And pretty much everybody is, that, that's been involved in the litigation, all the way from local entities to nationwide law firms and attorney generals' offices and tribal entities. Uh, pretty much everyone is recommending that these settlements be approved and go forward. So before you today is a resolution uh, that not only commits the city to entering into those settlements and to uh, accepting the benefits of the settlements. Uh, but it also addresses the fact that we're, we're now at a stage in the litigation where uh, it's not over, um, but we can begin to see the end. There are still multiple entities out there who haven't settled, but they tend to be, with the exception of Purdue Pharma, uh, they tend to be uh, smaller uh, entities. They will contribute, but probably nothing of the scale that you're considering tonight. So at this point, um, we want to look back at the fact that we were represented in this litigation by a law firm of nationwide stature. Uh, the Keller Rohrbach Law Firm, uh, and we have a fee agreement with them uh, that now is kind of coming into focus as the amounts of money that we'll be receiving are also coming into focus. Uh, it's a contingency fee and your, the resolution also authorizes your staff to take the necessary actions to satisfy that contractual responsibility. And I'm more than happy to answer any questions that council may have.
So are there any questions from council? Councilmember Moulton?
Uh, just for the sake of the public, what are some of the restrictions that you mentioned on the funding? I know part of the money that's coming down is restricted and part of it isn't of the part that is restricted. Can you give me an example of the kind of restrictions, please?
Well, it all has to be used for uh, abatement of the opioid epidemic in one form or fashion. Uh, there is uh, a list of approved uses that is attached to an agreement that was entered into between local governments, local litigating entities around the state and the Attorney General's Office, Attorney General of the State of California. Uh, and it's about three and a half pages long, single spaced. So I will just say that the breadth of it uh, is very accommodating to local initiative and to the kinds of things that you as council believe will have, will be impactful relative to uh, the opioid uh, epidemic as it affects the city of Eureka. And so, you know, I, I think it's probably easier to say the kinds of things that will be permitted than it is to say what won't. I mean, if you, if you want to spend money on something that has virtually nothing to do with the opioid epidemic, um, then uh, I think that's, that's where, that's going to be problematic.
Uh, by all means, yeah, mention what, uh, what we can spend it on rather than what we can't spend it on. I, I apologize. That's how I meant to phrase the question.
Well, let me just give an example. There is um, uh, there is permissive, there's permissive language that allows uh, the city to address issues of homelessness to the extent that they can, they are derived, and we know that to a significant degree, they are derived from uh, opioid and other substance abuse. We're allowed to spend money on uh, putting mental health workers and substance abuse workers on the street uh, next to our law enforcement teams uh, and social service teams that are out there, uh, already trying to assist people that are struggling. So those are, those are just a couple of examples. Uh, we, Eureka uh, was a participant in the committee that assisted in writing those rules. And so we did have some very direct input uh, into, into what we can do. And if you'd, uh, I'd be happy to provide that three and a half page, uh, I don't want to call it a laundry list, but three and a half page to, targeted list of uh, approved activities. I don't happen to have it ready to do share screen, but I can uh, get it to you.
I think that uh, satisfies my question. Thank you. One more, Mayor, if you don't mind? Um, what would be the nature of the payouts on this lawsuit? Is this um, a lump sum one-time thing? Are we looking at something across several years?
Well, it's kind of, that, that's interesting and it makes it uh, a little difficult to be precise uh, as to the amounts of money that will flow in uh, in any given year. Uh, just the five that you're being asked to approve tonight. You'll notice that uh, two of them are paid out over six years. One is over seven, one is over 10, one is over 15. And uh, the existing settlements are actually paid out over a total of 18 years. Um, so there will be a, a significant revenue stream available to the city uh, over, pretty much over that 18-year period. Uh, determining exactly how much is going to be coming in per year, I think is important to the city's budget process and to its ability to maximize the impact of uh, programs and actions that the city would like to take. It's going to take probably another year or two years for the flow of funds to really smooth out and become entirely predictable. Um, there's always going to be an element of unpredictability because uh, you know, some of these companies may seem to be financially stable today, but maybe not tomorrow. Um, so there's always that uncertainty. But I think after another year or two, um, it'll be possible for the city management and city finance to be able to say, this is what we anticipate uh, as our revenue in, you know, fiscal '24, '25. Uh, and, and ongoing after that. So. Yeah, I don't know if that answered your question, but I hope.
Uh, that does. Thank you very much. Yeah, just knowing that this is, um, has the potential for council and future councils to um, lean on this, even though it might fluctuate somewhat for long-term solutions, not just one Band-Aid thing, but really thinking far into the future of how we can um, address the long-term effects of this epidemic on our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll open it up to public comment. Is there anybody in chambers who'd like to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll move over to Zoom. Seeing none. Well, I just wanted to mention that in the resolution, this was something that was very interesting to me, that according to the Centers for Disease Control, one in four people who were prescribed opioids for chronic pain develop issues with addiction. One out of four. That's, that's insane. So anyway, bring it back to uh, council for comments and concern, uh, and a motion. Councilmember Fernandez?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution approving participate, participation in the Nationwide Opioid Settlement litigation.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Please vote.
Unanimous yes vote. Motion carries.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
And thanks for all your work on this.
Yeah, leading up to this. Thank you so much.
Rockstar.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Rockstar status. Okay, we're going to move into the uh, mid-year budget adjustments. Director Millar?
All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. Tonight's report is the 2022-23 Midyear Review. So in this presentation, we'll quickly go over the budget calendar. We will then go over revenue and expenditures by major fund. We will give, or I will give, a budget slash economic outlook, and then some time for So the 23-24 budget calendar, at my last presentation, the mid-year was supposed to come before you at the second meeting in February. Obviously, that has changed to tonight, but the remainder of the process is still on track, and the departments have begun their, filling out their 23-24 requests. So the next section, the mid-year review by major fund. Before I begin, I just want to give a reminder that revenues are displayed in parentheses. This represents a negative number, but in this case, a negative number is either income or savings. I have sales tax up there, for example. Expenditures are displayed as regular dollar figures, such as salaries. So to begin, we're going to start with the general fund, which is the city's main operating fund. You will see schedules such as this one. On the left, these are revenue types. So the city has thousands of budget line items, but in terms of reducing those down to something that can be put on a slide, they're shown in categories. On the left, we have the original budget. This was the budget that was adopted in June of '22. We have the total adjustment by category, and then what the new budget would be if these adjustments are adopted. And then finally, we have the rate of change between the amended budget, or the proposed amended budget, and the original budget. So to begin, we're going to look at taxes. So as you can see, in this category, we are reducing the outlook for tax revenues. The main driver of this is sales tax. We received an update in December from HDL. They're the consultants that provide us projections. They downgraded our sales tax by roughly $800,000. But fortunately, there was another revenue stream from property tax related to the redevelopment agency, or what used to be the redevelopment agency. So based on last year's budget, we saw about $400,000 in additional property tax revenues. So I was confident that we would see that again this year. So that helped kind of deal with the sales tax loss. The next category, intergovernmental. This is related to, you know, smaller grants. A lot of times, grant money comes in later than expected. So this represents some monies that we received this year. Charges for services, these are just various line items, but some big changes had to do with the fact that we no longer provide Eureka City Schools with an after-school program or staff, so I had to take that revenue out of the budget. But on a positive note, zoo admission and membership fees are projected to go up, mainly because we have a new contract with the Zoo Foundation. So we pay them a flat amount every fiscal year instead of giving them a percentage of membership fees. And then in the miscellaneous category, there were 13 increases with an average, that were averaged about $6,000 apiece. None of them were significant. So overall, you can see revenue didn't really change. So we will move on to expenditures. So to begin at the top, I did calculate some salary savings. So we are likely to see a large reduction in personnel costs and even more going forward. Materials and supplies, it went up by 13%, but it's relatively a small category within the general fund. Outside services, so in this category, we had to add that payment that we will make to the Zoo Foundation. So that essentially netted to zero because we received, or we increased, membership revenue. So essentially, it's a wash. And then in the miscellaneous category, we had just various department requests. In intergovernmental, in this category, this represents cost allocation. So due to an overage in last year's budget and for liability insurance, I had to increase liability insurance within every department's budget to make up for that overage. In capital outlay, that adjustment reflects the participatory budget program. In debt service, what's happening here is that the city pays for a lease that's in relation to a fire engine. The Fire JPA holds on to the capital reserve. So what happens is that the city will make the debt service payment and then essentially contribute less to the JPA to make up for that debt service payment. And then transfers, so the reduction in transfers reflects the reduction in a subsidy to the building fund. And then in the streets CIP fund, we receive some monies from PG&E. So because of that, I'm transferring less from the general fund to the streets fund. So looking at the bottom line, we started the year with a surplus of just under 1.6 million. It looks like that we will end the year at about 1.4 million in surplus, but given the fact that we should still capture salary savings going forward, it's likely that that adjustment will be covered by those salary savings. Next, we have the water fund, Fund 500. So the adjustment is to water service. We adopted new water rates this year. That adjustment reflects that. On the expenditure side, the main driver of expenditure increases has to do with water meter purchases. So right now, we're losing a lot of water meters, so we're trying to get ahead of this problem by buying in bulk. And then down here in the transfer category, we're spending less than we anticipated on CIP projects, so therefore, the reduction to the CIP, the water CIP fund goes down. Overall, we started the year with a large deficit. This was a planned deficit. The water fund has had a lot of cash reserves, and during the last rate study, we decided to utilize some of those reserves to keep water rates lower than having done the opposite. Next is the wastewater fund. Same story as the water fund. We're anticipating an increase in revenues due to the new rates. And then on the expenditure side, the biggest increases are coming from our legal issues with the treatment plant. So those increases represent legal costs as well as fines. Also, in the wastewater CIP fund, we're spending less than anticipated, so therefore, less money will be transferred from the operations fund. Overall, there was a small deficit at the beginning of the fiscal year, but it looks like we will have about a quarter million dollar surplus in the wastewater fund by the end of the fiscal year. Next is the harbor fund. There's not much to talk about in this fund. Revenues are steady, going up slightly. On the expenditure side, similar story, some small increases, but overall, not much change. This is a very well-balanced budget. And the building fund, some good news. Even though revenues do appear that they're going down, that's because the general fund will reduce the subsidy. This is due to savings both in personnel and outside services. So when we compare revenues to expenditures, we started the year with a balanced budget, and we will end the year with a balanced budget. Next, we have the internal service funds. This makes up equipment operations, risk, IT, general government and admin, and facility So revenue is going up. The internal service funds are unique because their revenues come from departments. Essentially, these funds are providing services to every department within the city. This increase reflects the need for more cash to cover liability insurance overages from the prior fiscal year. On the expenditure side, there's been a request for more materials and supplies. This is mainly due to increases in bulk fuel. Outside services, half of that is due to some new line items within the risk fund. The other half are just various increases from, or requests from departments. And then this large capital outlay increase is mainly due to a large vehicle purchase for police, as well as some bollards for Old Town. So overall, we anticipated a surplus at the beginning of the year. We are now looking at a deficit, but the good news is, half of that deficit will be covered by cash within these funds, and then the other half will be recaptured in next year's budget by increasing our cost allocation plan. So going forward, what should we expect and what should we look out for? I'm going to start with looking at sales tax, so comparing us to the state. So in the third quarter of 2022, the state saw an increase in sales tax by about 8%, whether that's actual receipts or receipts put into the correct period. So overall, the state did see a pretty healthy increase. Unfortunately, when we're looking at our local economy within Humboldt County, we did not do, or we went in the other direction. So you can see that the city of Eureka, in the third quarter of 2022, which is the most recent data, we went down by about 4%. Not as bad as when you look at the county or the unincorporated areas. They went down by roughly 23%. And then the county overall saw negative growth of about 11%. So I think the story here is that despite the state seeing increases in this category, we are essentially moving in the other direction, and we don't know, I don't have an answer for why this is, but I think it at least, at least needs to be identified. The good news is that going forward, when we're looking at the city's revenues from sales tax, we expect that sales tax will no longer decrease, but essentially remain flat. So that is a little bit of good news within this category. So going from a negative, negative to a positive, if you look at our local economy from the, an unemployment perspective, things are going really well. In fact, if you look at May of '22, we saw a record low unemployment of about 2.9% looking back 15 years. So even though we're seeing less consumer spending, we do have a very healthy job market. So there are conflicting signals in this economy right now. When I'm looking at the US economy in terms of unemployment, it's very similar to the local economy in terms of trends, as you can see. And in fact, the nation saw a record low of about 3.4% in January of '23. So both the local and national economy in terms of employment are doing very well. The thing that is not going well right now is inflation. And the way that the country deals with inflation is through increasing interest rates. So right now, there's a lot of focus on this guy, the chairman of the Federal Reserve and the other board members, because they are trying to determine how high interest rates need to go to curb inflation. As you can see, back in July of 2020, the 10-year treasury note was under 1%. So if you purchased a government bond, you got less than 1% on your investment. Today, that rate hovers around 4%. So it's grown very quickly, and essentially, it grew so fast that it killed the city's pension obligation bond strategy. That said, the Fed continues to try to abate inflation, and they have goals, or policy goals. You can see on the right, so this projection was back in December of '22. Their goal is to get inflation down to 2% per year, and they project out the effects on other economic indicators, including GDP, unemployment, there's inflation. And the way they're trying to control inflation is through interest rates or the federal funds rate. And by increasing the federal funds rate, they're trying to bring this down, but the consequence of increasing interest rates is that you're likely to see a decrease in GDP and an increase in unemployment. Unfortunately, based on the most recent data, they were wrong about GDP in 2022. It was much better than expected and much better than the average that they're aiming for. With unemployment, unemployment was lower than they expected. So the rise in interest rates thus far is not enough to essentially curb inflation. So what's likely to happen is that they will raise the federal funds rate even higher than what they thought back in December of '22, and it could stay longer, or could stay higher for longer. What the risk this poses to the economy is that it could lead to two different scenarios. One is a soft landing, which means that they're able to increase rates at a pace that would reduce inflation without causing a large increase in unemployment or a large decrease in GDP. If they raise rates too fast or hold them too high for too long, they'll create what is called a hard landing. This would essentially be a recession that would, or put unemployment way higher than their projections and bring down GDP essentially into a negative position. Our sales tax, the main revenue source in the general fund, is very sensitive to changes to GDP, because GDP really- to G D P, because G D P really represents, uh, the health of the consumer, uh, in the economy. So right now, I guess the best foot forward is to proceed with caution when it comes to the budget, because depending on how this works out with inflation, we could likely see a decrease in our main revenue source. Um, so that is the end of my presentation. And if you have any questions about the budget, uh, I would be happy to answer those.
Do you have any questions? Councilmember Molton?
Thank you, uh, for that thorough presentation. Very understandable. Um, is there an opportunity for us to take advantage of those high interest rates?
Yes. So currently, the city has, uh, or the general fund has maybe the healthiest reserves or cash reserves we've seen in the last twenty or thirty years. Uh, typically, uh, we've kept our cash in a state fund called Leif. And Leif earns about one to two percent on our cash. But given the fact that interest rate or government bonds are now anywhere between three and five percent, uh, we have the opportunity of putting that cash into government bonds, which could essentially double or triple our yield. Uh, the one downside is that it's all about timing. So I don't want to put millions of dollars in a ten-year bond, because I won't get that until ten years down the road. So I plan to come back to you in the next couple of months to come up with a strategy that would take advantage of these higher interest rates.
Thank you.
Uh, councilmember Bauer?
Great presentation, once again, uh, Lane. Um, the Inflation Reduction Act that has billions of dollars in, you know, federal money, do we ever anticipate seeing any of that, whether it be like in the C I P monies, you know, to do roadwork or something? I mean, it seems like I hear about all the time, but I don't see it translating to money for cities.
I'm not familiar with any monies that are directly available to cities.
Okay.
Uh, I think one good thing from the Inflation Reduction Act is that it set aside a lot of monies for, uh, wind energy. And I think indirectly that will very much benefit this community. Uh, and people should be aware that there are some very, uh, desirable tax credits in the, uh, Inflation Reduction Act. So if you want to get a heat pump or solar panels, uh, those, um, you can get, you know, thousand-dollar rebates on, uh, acquiring those items. So, uh, the city might not directly, uh, benefit from that act, but, uh, at least the local economy and the, uh, local citizens can.
Great. And one last question about T O T. I didn't see that in there. Is there been an increase? Have people come into our city and, and staying? Or what do you see?
It softened a little bit. Um, I tend to budget very conservatively. So even though we, you know, hit a record high last year, I kept it low enough so that if there was a variance, that it wouldn't have a negative effect on the budget. So I don't think it will do as well as last fiscal year, but I think it's still pretty strong.
Thank you.
Councilmember Costellano?
Let's see, a few questions. Um, the Lloyd Building demolition, you know, that's something we were forced to do due to the earthquake. Um, will there be, you know, a clearly a large unexpected cost, the possibility of recouping that money in some way?
I'm optimistic, but, uh, I think the city manager can provide more information.
Yeah, we're, we're optimistic, but it's gonna unfortunately take a while to figure out. I feel really loud again, but, um, the typical, you know, didn't declare the federally, it didn't get declared, but, uh, the state did. And so we do a, um, a damage assessment, um, you know, ever since it's happened and we've added, you know, all of the stuff that's happened to our properties, we've included that, um, demo cost in that. And we're hopeful that that will be reimbursed. Um, we're not depending on that and we're making sure that we do, um, address this through the property owner and, and through some other means. So we'll have multiple ways of trying to recoup some of that money.
Will that potentially help our neighbors in Riedel? The, the fact that?
They've been filling out the same damage assessment. Um, so yes, it should.
Yeah, if the, yeah, okay. And then, um, these are just a couple landscaping services. There was a unexpected cost there. Is that because we were down staffing and had to hire outside contracts or?
So yeah, what it was, was, um, we had, we had contracted with Cal Fire for years. Um, we had also contracted with Swap, um, the Sheriff's Work Alternative Program, um, for years. Um, Swap was pretty much non-existent for most of the year. And so we weren't available with those services and nor were we with Cal Fire. Cal Fire still is no longer service. So what we did is we reallocated a portion of that money, which wasn't enough to hire a, a, a local, um, contractor. So we hired a local contractor, um, um, to do some work for us.
Okay. Um, I'm curious why the change in services with Eureka City Schools for, that was for an after-school program?
It's a very long story, but what it was is the, um, Eureka City Schools received a bunch of funding due to COVID and there a lot of our employee, we staffed everything and they would have basically, um, kind of supervisors at each location. Um, their funding, um, allowed them to raise their pay to a level that was nowhere near attainable for us. And so we lost a lot of staff and we weren't able to, regain those staff in order to do it. And so Eureka City Schools took over the, um, after-school program that we were once doing.
Okay. And then I was just curious, this is a little bit speculative, um, just, uh, has there been any analysis on the relationship between decrease in sales tax? And just in general, increase in cost of living, like the cost of housing rental? I mean, you know, we've seen in our community for sure that the cost of housing has increased.
I mean, obviously, if your rent goes up or your mortgage payment goes up, then you have less money for, uh, taxable items. Um, I think you can see those trends over the long run, but, uh, given you know, the period of these higher, um, or the higher cost of goods and housing at this point, I, I don't think we would see a strong correlation yet. Uh, in some ways, you know, when inflation affects taxable items, we benefit from that. But, uh, so it, it's, you know, I think it's mostly a negative, but there are some positives to inflation.
Yeah. Yeah. Part of my mind also just like looks for a correlation then with like vacation rentals. And anyway, it's, it would be hard to really. And then, uh, uh, the hard landing scenario, you know, I, I think about, you know, the relationship between national trends. And of course, here locally, there's a lot of new industries emerging and growing. Like, I would just be curious to hear your thoughts on like how, you know, as a city, as a region, how well we can kind of insulate, insulate our economy through emerging industries in terms of like potential hard landings on a national level.
Um, I mean, the best way to insulate ourselves is to have, uh, robust industry. So we're well positioned right now because, um, well, for one reason, uh, Humboldt State becoming, uh, the Cal Poly, uh, clearly, uh, injected a lot of, um, additional funding into the community. So that's, I think, one way that will help us in the event of a hard landing. Uh, hopefully, um, we move forward with both the fish farm and the wind farm. And I think that will also help blunt any sort of, uh, recession in the future. Yeah, I think we're well positioned, but I, you know, if like government agencies lose a lot of sales tax, they'll end up letting a lot of employees go and will, you know, we will still see some negative effects because that's what we've seen in the past.
Thank you.
Councilmember, excuse me, councilmember Contreras Deluge?
Uh, yeah, my question is, uh, earlier you mentioned salary savings and savings in personnel. Um, I'm curious what that is. Is that projected savings or that is we are eliminating position savings? Or not filling position savings? I guess I'm trying to find out what that is.
Salary savings typically comes from, uh, vacant positions. Um, certain positions are harder to fill. Uh, so at the beginning, beginning of the year, I budget as if every position is filled. And when I get halfway through the year, what I do is I say, okay, well, by this time, how much, based on the budget, how much did I expect to spend and how much did we actually spend? And I take that difference and that's what I use to adjust the, the budget. So, um, it's not from, uh, eliminating any employees. It's mainly because we have positions that we can't fill. And, um, that's where the savings comes from.
Yeah, and some of it's just regular turnover. There's not a position out there that we're not trying to fill. But, um, so we make modifications to positions if we're having a hard time filling them. Um, and do different strategies and trying to make up for that. I mean, we just did it in Public Works where we have a difficult time hiring a deputy city engineer. So we kind of reorg, um, reorganized that group and brought in other people just to cover all the workload that's necessary. But, um, every position that we have, we're trying to fill. And then that salary savings is difficult to project because you'll have overtime and sometimes that overtime, you know, doesn't, it's never got to the point of exceeding it, but some, some departments have overtime that when they have positions gone, that overtime goes higher than what you have budgeted. So it's kind of a balancing act.
And if you go back five or 10 years, we actually used to have a revenue item that was salary savings because it was such a, um, predictable event. So we don't do that anymore, but, um, it's very common to see, especially in terms of public safety positions, um, they tend to be hard to fill.
My follow-up question really quick. Um, so this one page I'm looking at, the full-time equivalent positions by department, and it has a twenty twenty-three adopted budget and then it has a twenty twenty-three amended budget. I just wanted to make sure, so I'm reading that right, that what that's saying is it's amended because those haven't been filled, but not that they're not still trying to be filled.
So, um, in this case, um, what is happening is, um, either we are uh, swapping one position for another. So where the net effect on total F T Es or full-time positions is zero. And then in some cases, we are actually adding new positions. And I realized I made an error on this schedule and, uh, in economic development, we're not adding a full-time position, we're adding an R P T. So the increase is not actually one full-time position. It's a fraction, uh, typically about seventy percent of a full-time. So overall, uh, we're adding point seven F T Es to the current year budget.
Thank you.
Yep. And from a financial standpoint, we just keep track of temporary employees, employees different than F T Es and R P Ts are considered F T Es. So while it's a new position, that position was a temporary employee and was working approximately twenty hours a week. And now is probably going to be working like thirty hours a week. So the position was always there. It's just reclassified as an partial F T E.
Okay. Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll open it up for public comment. Is anyone in chambers that would like to comment on this issue? Seeing none, we'll move over to Zoom. Is, is Zoom still there? Okay. Yeah. No? Okay. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council for comments and a motion. Anyone?
I'll move to, sorry, I'll move to approve or adopt the resolution, uh, for mid-year bud, uh, yeah, financial year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, mid-year budget adjustments.
I'll second.
Please vote.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Director Merlark, can you take the pictures for Public Works for the C I P next time?
Of course, yes. All right. Thank you.
So moving on to the salary schedule update.
Yes, good evening, mayor and council. Um, the salary schedule, the item is before you now. My name is Wolf Holder. I'm with the Human Resources Department. Um, this item is routine. Um, the city's salary, salary schedule is updated and approved by council as required by Cal Pers. When the salary schedule contains changes to executive salaries, it's a requirement that these changes are reported orally. The changes to the salary schedule, um, there before you reflect changes to classifications and pay rates, including previously negotiated and approved cost of living adjustments um, that went into effect on Ja, in January of this year and have been applied to the salary ranges for all permanent city classifications, including the salaries for the following executive positions. And that would be the, uh, the director of public works, the assistant city manager slash city clerk, the community services director, finance director, and my own position, H R director. Um, again, these are already, um, uh, actions that have been previously approved by this body. Uh, the salary schedule is just capturing them. And the reason this is before you is for the, the, that it has to be reported out. So in conclusion, staff recommends that the city council adopt resolution approving the city's updated salary and pay rate schedule for all regular full-time and regular part-time position titles and classifications to reflect routine classification and compensation changes and the cost of living increases that were approved for the beginning of this year. Um, that's it. And I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Great. Does anybody have any questions for Director Fuller? Seeing none, we'll open it up for public comment. Does anybody from the audience care to, uh, comment on this issue? No? How about Zoom? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council for a motion and a second and a vote. Oh, and comments if you have them.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution of the city council approving the city's salary and pay rate schedule for all regular full-time, regular part-time and temporary classifications reflecting salary adjustments for various positions due to a cost of living adjustment increase that went into effect on January first, twenty twenty-three and establishing pay rates for new classifications.
I'll second.
Great. So we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Okay, thank you. And now I lost my agenda. Where is it? So next up is an ordinance on decorum. Um, city attorney Luna?
Good evening, mayor and council. So this update to, uh, an existing ordinance of the city, the decorum ordinance that's been in place for quite some time. Uh, this update was driven largely by the passage of S B eleven hundred, uh, last year. And S B eleven hundred made some, uh, changes to the Brown Act and essentially codified, uh, case law that had been in place for, uh, quite some time, actually, about ten years. But it did bring some clarification, uh, to bodies like ours about how you, how you invite people to, uh, public comment and how, when there are disruptions during public comment period or otherwise, there is now a procedure, uh, clarified by the legislature to, um, you know, warn people that they're being disruptive to the extent that public business can no longer go on. Uh, and if that's the case, then, uh, the chair is emboldened to tell people, uh, who are disrupting to no longer disrupt or potentially be removed from chambers. So, um, to capture that change in the law, we, uh, did bring last meeting an update to the council process that also had, uh, this decorum update in it. And we're, we're now bringing this ordinance to, um, bring alignment with the council procedures that were adopted last time and the law. And that's what's before you now. And I'd be happy to answer any questions about it.
Thank you. Are there any questions for city attorney Luna? Thank you. Are there any questions for City Attorney Luna? Seeing none? We'll open it up for public comment. Does anybody from the public want to comment on this item? How about Zoom? Seeing no one, we'll bring it back to council for comments and a motion. Councilmember Bauer?
I'll make the motion to waive full reading, read by title only and introduce bill number 1014-CS in ordinance of the City of Eureka, replacing in its entirety decorum, section 30.13 of Title III, Chapter 30.
Second.
Thank you, motion and second. Any further comments?
I just have one. Thank you so much for bringing this forward. And these clarifications I think are going to be really helpful to our meeting. So thank you.
You're welcome, Mayor.
First and seconded vote, please.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Great. Future agenda items. Councilmember Costalano?
Let's see. Sorry, we are on the future agenda items.
We are.
Okay, I just want to make sure I heard it right. There's a couple, but anyway, let's see, the first one would be a warming center. And I am, you know, can't say too much about it. But I am inclined to ask for a special meeting or some sense of urgency about this item.
So we can get consensus? Okay. Do you need consensus on doing an urgency type thing or no?
It's just a special meeting. It's similar to another council meeting. So we'll look at schedules and talk to staff and figure out how long it would take to come back with something. If there was more clarification about what we're thinking for a warming center, it would help so that we knew what kind of parameters we're working with and what we need to look at.
Did you have some ideas, Councilmember Costalano?
Low barrier? I'm hesitant without it being an agenda item to say too much.
Thank you, Councilmember Costalano, for recognizing the limitations of this item.
Councilmember Fernandez?
I know it was something we briefly touched on at last week's special meeting, the workshop on homelessness. So around that idea, I believe it been offered that, and again, I'm referring to the prior discussion, so I'm not getting too far into it, that, that Councilmember Costalano had held events prior where it was just kind of an overnight movie. And I think the justification there would be to have a heating center overnight. Given the inclement weather.
Yeah. Of course, I recognize that we need to be able to have enough, enough discussion to, to actually put something on the agenda. So it's a balancing act, I know.
Do you have enough information, City Attorney Luna? Or City Manager Slattery?
We will figure it out, yes.
Thank you. Did you have another item you wanted to bring forward, Councilmember Costalano?
Yeah. Yeah, unless, okay. The, just the, you know, again, kind of riffing off of last week's special meeting, I would like for this one, I would say has less urgency, but a plan for sanctioned camps that involves community access for successful participation or successful implementation and, and a series of workshops related to that. Does that make sense?
Could you clarify what you mean by community access for successful implementation, please?
Sorry. Work, I, I get, yeah, what does that mean? Opportunities to work with community organizations to, you know, as discussed last week, we've permitted, you know, these things are permitted, but yet it hasn't been implemented. So working with community organizations for, for an implementation plan.
There are ones that have been implemented, but yes.
Sorry, you're, you're right.
So it seems to me, I recall, and I could be incorrect, so if I am, let me know. But you had talked about bringing forward organizations and having conversations on supporting them into, through the process, through those workshops. Is that similar to what you're saying?
More succinct way of saying what I said last week and can't seem to say it again this week. So thanks.
So what do folks think about that? Thumbs up, thumbs down, thumbs sideways?
Well, quick question, like when we talk about workshops, not a quorum, I mean, how, how would those work? We're not involved, we can't interact or what are you trying, and what are you thinking?
Well, that's why I think part, I think the plan would come before council to implement workshops for community organizations.
So what I'm thinking is, is that coming to council at a future meeting, describing what these workshops would look like and that staff would be able to host workshops with those people that are interested or have some sort of plan and try and get them through the process for their plan.
Okay, thumbs up, thumbs down, thumbs sideways. Great. Thank you. Does anyone else have any future agenda items? Not at this time, okay. So we'll move on to city manager reports. City Manager Slattery? Oh, did you have something?
No.
Oh, you were just looking at me, interestingly. Okay.
Okay, so I think I alluded this to at our last meeting. Tonight, we have Economic Development Coordinator Amanda Kruške in the House to give us a presentation kind of as a follow-up on the special event policy that Assistant City Manager Powell passed last time. There's been a need to update this as well because of some of the concerns that we've had with some of our special events. And so Project Coordinator Kruške has set up a new application process as well as a handbook for folks looking to hold a special event.
Good evening, Mayor Brigell and Council. This evening, I'll be sharing with you the special event planner's handbook and the new special event permit application. I'm Amanda Kruške, Economic Development Coordinator and Executive Director of Eureka Main Street. My office is inside the Eureka Visitor Center down in Old Town. And I've been, I've been planning special events in the city of Eureka for years and took over the responsibility for processing special event permit applications about a year ago. Working closely with event planners, departments that review the applications and the document itself, I identified some shortfalls that led to, led me to create a new application and the special event planner's handbook. While it's nice to have a simple application, it's led to some problems because details have been left out about events that, and those, that can lead to inconvenience, frustration and unsafe conditions. The updated application will allow city staff to have a clearer picture of the overall event and reduce confusion. The creation of the handbook will help new event planners identify the steps of the progress and where to obtain permits and services that they need for a successful event. The City of Eureka supports, the City of Eureka supports and welcomes special events to enhance the quality of life for its residents and visitors. We recognize that many social, cultural and financial benefits of special events and encourage them as part of life in the City of Eureka. Benefits include economic growth, increased tourism, recreation, recognition of the arts, charitable aid and many others. The City of Eureka is also responsible to protect the safety, health, property and general welfare of its residents and visitors. Because events may have an impact on residents and businesses, we must determine the terms and conditions under which an event may be approved and conducted. The purpose of the handbook is to help planners accomplish the positive goals of their event while minimizing the potential negative impacts on the community. So you'd need a special event permit when there are large crowds expected, public transportation or traffic, traffic patterns could be affected. There will be amplified sound and if there's fireworks or pyrotechnics of any kind. Demonstrations, protests and rallies are allowed without special event permits. When protests, when protests are peaceful, amplified sound is not too loud. Pedestrian and vehicle traffic are not impacted. Streets and sidewalks are clear and building entrances are accessible. A special event permit is required if any of these factors are untrue. The special event permit process, application process is a simple five steps. First, review the handbook and complete the application, request event coordinator review if needed. Submit the application and required documents. Review process, the review process occurs and then approval to enjoy your event. Street closures require permission from police, fire and traffic engineering. Businesses and residents impacted along the closure route must be notified at least 30 days before the event. No parking signage must be posted no less than 24 hours before the event. Each concession booth operator must obtain a temporary seller's permit and temporary food facility permit. Alcohol can be served when it is, when a special daily use has been issued. Events held in parks do not require special event permit. Rather, an application and fees must be submitted to the City of Eureka's Community Services Department. Non-concession vendors selling items need a temporary seller's permit. And police, fire and public works determine whether city services may be needed for festivals and large events. Any additional concerns and conditions will be shared during the permit review. During the preliminary application review, City of Eureka departments are looking for any fire, safety or transportation complications that may arise from the event. The handbook offers helpful tips on topics including permits, solid waste management, noise limitations, parade routes and street closures, insurance requirements and post-event cleanup plans. The application timing identifies 90 days, 30 days and 10 days when the event planner should be applying for specific permits and providing documentation. Although the City of Eureka encourages special events, there are occasions when permits may be denied. For instance, when there are substantial interruption of public transportation or other traffic, public safety concerns and the lack of insurance coverage. Possible violent or disorderly conduct can also lead to denial. While it is possible that it can be, that a permit can be denied, city staff works creatively to find solutions to make it possible to approve events. If denied, an appeal can be made to the city manager for reconsideration. If satisfaction is not met with the city manager, at the city manager level, an appeal can be made to the city council. City council will take action at the next regularly scheduled meeting and city council's decision is final. The handbook is wrapped up with a list of contacts and resource links. So that leads us to the special event application. The application requires an event site map or roadmap as well as a detailed description of the event and activities. If applicable, an alcohol control plan is necessary. It is really important to have the signature sheet from businesses and residents potentially impacted by the event. A certificate of liability insurance with a $2 million minimum coverage is required and additional insurance may be requested. To serve alcohol at an event, you must have an issue, you must have been issued a one-day special license and adhere to the strict boundaries for monitoring alcohol consumption. Signage and security are essential for compliance. Drinks are limited by size and only two per adult 21 and older in approved drinkware. Servers are responsible to track and ensure underage drinking and over serving does not occur. EPD and city manager reserve the right to not allow alcohol-based events on safety concern and limit special events serving alcohol to one event per day. The new special event permit application asks for basic event information and insurance information. Event description and features, a site map, details about entertainment, alcohol and cleanup plans. And applicants can also consent for the city to promote, to promote the event on multiple platforms. The map should include all of the event features indicated on the application. For example, road closures, entertainment stages, vendor booths and portable toilets. Notifying businesses and residents of any interruptions is crucial. Event planners must contact each to inform them of the event, answer any questions and get their signature of acknowledgement. After the application is submitted, it is sent to the department for, departments for review. Those include Building and Public Works, Eureka Main Street, Police, Fire, Maintenance, Community Services, Risk Management and Traffic and Engineering. All additional conditions and reminders are relayed to the applicant with the approval of the application. Examples are traffic control plans, fire safety regulations and reminders to keep sidewalks clear for pedestrians. Once the departments approve the application, it is signed by the city manager and emailed to the applicant and the fun begins. And here's my contact information if you have any questions.
Any questions, Councilmember Molton?
Thank you, event coordinator. How many, a couple of questions. How many special events would this apply to in a year?
Oh, I don't know exactly. I would guess maybe 50? Yeah.
I would say that these events, they range in, from a block party at a neighborhood, which is very small. We have, you know, a few of those to like the large Fourth of July festival, the Friday night market. These are the more complicated and layered events that a lot of these concerns that we're trying to address.
And the signature pages, getting sig-, I'd like some more, I'm curious about that, getting signatures from impacted businesses. How does that work and what happens if they don't want to sign?
So the way that works is if, if your business is, say, in an area that is going to experience a street closure for an event, the, the event coordinator or their volunteers will have to go to the business and inform them about the event, share a flyer with them and get a signature preferably from, from an owner or a manager. And there is a spot on there where you can decline or you can, you can accept, accept or disapprove. And I guess if there were enough disapprovals, it would spark a real look at, at the event. It could potentially lead to a denial.
Is there something, there's no, it sounds like there's nothing specific in the policy that has a threshold or?
It's been my experience, and I've been doing these since 2001, that we, if we have, for instance, the Henderson Center Farmer's Market, at one point, there was three businesses out of 25 that disapproved. We ended up holding meetings with the Henderson Center merchants groups. And in most, all of our cases, I can't think of an event that was denied, we've been able to meet with those stakeholders and resolve it at some level. Well, maybe not everyone is happy. and resolve it at some level. Well, maybe not everyone is happy, but they have, um, been presented with a plan that they can accept.
A compromise that no, not everybody's happy with. We're familiar with this. Uh, so it sounds like that's more of a, um, like a litmus test to see if there is, you know, need for further discussion, not necessarily an opportunity for a few people who don't like the idea of something to be able to veto it on behalf of everybody.
Correct.
Characterizing, thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Fernandez?
That's a similar question then in into neighborhoods. Does that petition, does that signature page also apply to neighbors?
Yes, it would.
Okay, and and has there been any time in the past, as long as you've been doing this, that there's been anything that's come up where someone's refused to sign or?
No, usually on a block party in a neighborhood or a cul-de-sac, all of the neighbors are, you know, um, working together and they want this for whatever reason. And I don't think I've ever encountered a neighborhood with one neighbor who didn't want to participate.
And especially now with our, um, our grant part, our grant program that allows for that, they're usually coordinated with a group of people, and then they apply for a grant, and then they make a special event out of it.
Uh, we don't need to take public comment on this. Councilmember Costellano?
Thank you. I know, you know, from attending Eureka Main Street Board meetings that the board members have really been asking for this, and it's a, it's a lot of work to make a, you know, a whole handbook and things, so thanks so much for your work on this.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Looking at your presentation, it just made me love Eureka even more. Such fabulous photos, thank you. All right. Council reports, we're gonna start with, uh, Councilmember Fernandez.
I had to write everything down in case my tablet here died, so. Wanted to, wanted to thank the mayor here for putting together the Mental Health Town Hall last Saturday that she spoke to. Uh, really appreciated the discussion that was had there as well as the, uh, the panel that was introduced, and I thought the facilitator did a fantastic job, and I know that's one of our city employees, Jacob. Jacob Rosen, thank you.
Managing mental health clinician.
Yeah, he's, uh, he did a fantastic job, I think, uh, handling that. And then just last week, I got to attend the, uh, the Redwood Region Economic Development Commission, REDEC. And, uh, the big update there was the Cal Poly Capital Projects Update. And so there's a lot of plans that they have, a lot of development going on, uh, that we're going to see in the coming years, uh, nothing too immediate, other than, yeah, okay. Other than the childcare center and another facility that they'll be, uh, revamping here over the next year itself. Uh, there's still a need for housing for students, and I think they had said that the approximately three hundred and fifty beds are still of a concern, so. That's everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Costellano?
Let's see, um, I attended the Eureka Main Street Board Meeting, um, Harbor Two by Two Meeting, along with, uh, Councilmember Fernandez, uh, the Mayor's Town Hall, thank you so much. A conversation, uh, hosted by California YMB of other pro-housing council members across the state. Uh, and I just want to say, it was very interesting that, um, uh, myself and Councilmember from Arcata Stacy Atkins Alzahar were the two sort of people representing like rural northern communities. And I think we're actually far ahead of many of our, uh, southern, more urban counterparts, and I'm thankful that we're, we're, we're doing such great work here. Um, and maybe we'll teach a workshop to them in the future on what we're doing right. And then the Humboldt Transit Authority Meeting and Arts Alive.
Thank you. Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
So mine goes back a few weeks because I had missed our last council meeting two weeks ago or three weeks ago. Um, so I had, right after that, I'd gotten to go to that Link Housing the last time, have to attend over Zoom this next time. Um, I thought that was really excellent and really well-attended, and, um, it was great to really kind of get a more in-depth understanding of like what's planned and just to see kind of the enthusiasm of our community too about it. Um, I also got to just recently meet with our Chief of Police and our Assistant Chief, and, um, I actually, our meeting was cut a little bit short, so I need to go back and actually get to finish that, but, um, that was really nice just to kind of get a, an idea on what they're, what they're working on, what their hopes are for our community, and just, um, just how, uh, oriented they are and trying to really, um, to really serve our community, and I just really appreciated that. Um, I also got to do Eureka Parks and Facilities Tour and, um, very excited to see some parks from when I was a kid, so Da Yas, is that how I, Da Yas? Super excited to kind of actually get to stand out there and envision what's gonna happen and, um, Jeffrey Me, is that right? Did I say it correctly? Was just so enthusiastic about, um, what they're doing and what, uh, I just was very excited too. Said this before, but parks are the low-barrier thing. They're the thing that everybody can do, that every kid can do, every family can participate in, no matter how poor they are, and so I just, I love parks and very passionate about, about having great parks and, um, and also got to go out and see what's gonna be our new Coyote and Bear exhibit, which is just beautiful. Um, so, uh, just amazing, the transition from that being the little zoo that I went to as a kid, where I could, um, reach over and pet prairie dogs so long as nobody was looking, um, to the zoo we have now. Um, I also got to meet with, uh, the people from Keep, Keep Eureka Beautiful, um, talk with them about their goals and tree planting. I also got to meet with Mike Cipra from, uh, Friends of the Dunes and go out and see some of the stuff that they're working on. And Tom Wheeler, um, who's the Director of Epic, and just kind of, um, find out some of the things that they're really focusing on and working on. And then the last thing that I got to do, I got to attend over our Facebook Live, I'm so, um, for, on this past, uh, Saturday, um, for the Mental Health Town Hall, and, um, that was really, I still have some people I'd like to meet in person that I haven't met in person that are actively involved, but it was really, um, great to get to hear everybody speak and, um, answer questions and hear our community concerns, and I just, I feel like I, I learned a lot from listening and, um, it was just a really, really good, so that's, that's me.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Bauer?
Uh, thank you. Yeah, I had a couple of JPA meetings, and I was supposed to go to Artesia for a Cal Cities meeting for Board of Directors, and my flight was canceled because it was snowing that day. Um, I'm very sorry I missed it, but there was no way I was driving to Artesia in one day. Um, I attended a offshore wind community benefit network meeting, so that's a discussion of, you know, what can our community get out of the, out of the wind farms besides wind energy? Um, so it's a really interesting, um, discussion about what we hope to get, you know, from having this, um, pretty massive piece of infrastructure in our neck of the woods. I attended the Mental Health One-O-One, thank you, Mayor. That was, um, great, and it was great, I mean, the whole room was filled with a lot of really passionate people, um, uh, you know, passionate about the issue of mental health, and it was great to see all the support that's out there, and and hopefully we can do a lot more on that issue. And I also attended Bull for Kids' Sake, but, um, they cut our lane off, so we didn't get to, didn't get to finish our, uh, I didn't get to get much of a game in. And, um, yeah, attended the Leadership Redwood Coast Get Together on Saturday, which is really cool to just chat with business people and, yeah, that's, that's it.
Thank you. And Councilmember Moulton?
Thank you. I don't have any city-related, uh, travel to report. I'm looking forward to the meeting with the JPA tomorrow, uh, and the, uh, more engagement with EPD, just digging into public safety and how that works in our area. Obviously, Arts Alive happened, and that's always big fun. Um, I get to walk around during Arts Alive and talk to different people, and this time we spent a good amount of time at the CR Downtown Campus, and I just appreciate that we have so many different, um, really accessible educational opportunities in our community.
And so then, of course, I was reminded at the end of the day, um, I did go on a ride along with the Fire Department um, the day after our last council meeting. It was fabulous. Those guys work so hard. I mean, go out with both of them, EPD and the Fire Department, but I just so appreciate all the dedication and work that goes into that. Um, and I would encourage all council members, if you get an opportunity, to go out with them on an actual ride along and just see what they do. Um, I was just out from like nine to three, so it wasn't like an all-day, all-nighter, although I do plan on going on another all-nighter someday soon. So with that, if there's no more, uh, reports, no, good, okay. We're adjourned. Thanks, everybody, for being here. We appreciate you.